Just before we arrived here in the boardroom tonight, the Pulaski County School Board held a closed session conducted in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2 to 3712. I need a motion to certify our closed session.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you, and we do have some action that will be taken from that session. Mr. Graham?
And Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend to the school board members that student number 8604235 also be expelled for 365 days with an entry, re-enrollment entry meeting on May 14th, 2026.
May I get a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mrs. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend to the school board that student number 8603573 also be expelled for 365 days with a re-enrollment entry meeting on May 14th, 2026.
Thank you. May I get a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation?
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mrs. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
And finally, Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend that student number 8604306 be suspended for the remainder of the school year and then start the first semester at Pulaski County High School in the Cougar Center with no participation in any activities over the summer or during the fall semester.
Thank you. May I get a recommendation, I mean, may I get a motion? We accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you all.
All right. We will, now, having done that business, we will officially call the May 13th Pulaski County School Board meeting to order. I believe we will do so with the Pledge of Allegiance. We're doing it on our own tonight.
We're doing that on, would you like to lead us?
Gina, you're up.
(laughing).
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have some, a lot of recognitions. I'm turning it all over to you, Mr. Graham.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. We just have such a wonderful school division with many things to celebrate, so I'll start with our Virginia School Board Business Honor Role. You should probably come on down. Yes, ma'am.
So each year, the Virginia School Board Association recognizes businesses that have shown support for our school division. This year, Pulaski County Public Schools recognized New River Community College, New River Valley Community Services, and Pulaski County Sheriff's Department, and let me tell you all, they provide wonderful support for our school system. Absolutely wonderful.[423.53][423.53](applause) We appreciate all the work that you do for the faculty, staff, and students in Pulaski County. On behalf of the businesses, the following are here to accept their award. New River Community Services, Ms. Faust and Ms. Womack, are you all here?[443.22][443.22](applause) And from New River Community College, Dr. Mark Row, VP for Workforce Development and External Relations, yet don't go anywhere, Dr. Row.[464.31][464.31](applause) And from Pulaski County Sheriff's Department, Stu Nelson.[477.62][477.62](applause) Yes.[523.33][523.33](laughing) You're welcome.
(inaudible)
Thank you all.[527.33][527.33](applause) at the Virginia History Day competition. Two students received special awards for their work. Willow Dameron, a student at Pulaski County High School, received the MacArthur Memorial Prize for her documentary, for her documentary, "Justice Beyond Borders: Nuremberg Trials and Their Role in Human Rights." Please come forward.[600.33][600.33](applause) Nina Bucicard, a student at Pulaski County Middle School, received the VMFA ARTS and Literature Awards for her performance of Rachel Carson in Silent Spring. Congratulations, Danny, you gotta come up and get a picture too, so come on.[632.66][632.66](laughing)[633.66][633.66](applause) You gotta go with your daughter, come on.[637.72][637.72](laughing) one other teacher for the Virginia History Day District Teacher of the Year Award for District Three. This award is even more special because the nominations come from students participating in History Day. Congratulations to Ms. Lane. This means you cannot retire.[693.48][693.48](laughing) Do you have anybody here with pictures with you? Oh, yeah, you gotta come up.[711.62][711.62](laughing) Pulaski County Public Schools and the Pulaski County School Board would like to recognize the following employees for their dedication this past year. Each school nominates and votes for their fellow coworker that they feel is deserving of this outstanding award. We want to acknowledge and celebrate their outstanding performance, dedication, and positive impact on Pulaski County Public Schools. Thank you all for the, all that you do each and every day. From Chrysler S Elementary, Cassie has been employed as a paraprofessional in Pulaski for 20 years. She served seven years at PCHS before spending the last 13 at Chrysler Elementary. Cassie resides in Pulaski with her husband John and two children, Mackenzie and Dawson. Cassie has a positive personality and always has a smile on her face. Those nominating, Ms. Davis stated she is always willing to do whatever is needed for our students and staff. She's an extremely hard worker that goes out of her way to provide for our students. No matter who Cassie is working with, she always finds a way to help the student be successful. We are so proud of Ms. Davis and all she does to help the And Dublin Elementary, Hunter has served Dublin Elementary School as a full-time rotating substitute teacher for the past three years. Mr. Dalton goes above and beyond what is expected of him in every aspect of his job. He is always willing to help and often jumps in to assist without being asked. Mr. Dalton always does his job with a smile on his face. He's always eager to bring Shammy the Leprechaun around to visit with students. His colleagues describe Hunter as reliable and dependable. Hunter is a huge asset to the Dublin Elementary School community. Hunter, are you here? We'll give him a round of applause.[848.12][848.12](applause) Pulaski Elementary School, I know Michael's here, so you can come on up. Michael Cox is currently a kindergarten paraprofessional assigned to multiple classes. Faculty and staff have said this is Mike's first year in the school system. He has embraced his role as kindergarten assistant. He loves coming to work every day and interacting with the kindergartners. He plays with them on the playground, at recess every day. You can hear the students shouting "Mr. Mike" the entire time.[881.41][881.41](laughing) He helps them swing, use the monkey bars, et cetera. Can you still do the monkey bars?[888.56][888.56](laughing) He chooses to eat lunch with the students every day instead of at a teacher table. Mike enjoys joining them in their activities during gym, too. He always has a smile on his face when you see him at PES, in the gym, hallway, or classroom. He helps the students in the classroom with computer work, seat work, or whatever the teacher needs at that moment. His name, Mr. Mike, has become popular with kindergarten and older students as well. Mr. Mike grew up in Pulaski County, attended Riverlawn Elementary, Dublin Elementary, and Pulaski County High School. He has raised three daughters in our school system. His wife, Tasha, also works in the school system, has worked in the school system for 20 years. He attended New River Community College, Virginia Tech, and Bluefield College. After retiring from postal service after 34 years, he wanted to work for a system that gave his family such a great start. He is a constant all of all the hard work, all of the teachers, and support staff at Pulaski Elementary show each and every day. Mike shared that they really care about the successes of the students and always give 110%. He spends most of his Good job.[1005.12][1005.12](applause) Riverlawn Elementary School, Sandra Kegel is a vital part of Riverlawn School community who, in just over a year, has been a true asset. Sandra serves as a custodian, but her dedication extends far beyond their traditional duties, as she consistently goes above and beyond to ensure our school is not just clean, but truly welcoming. Students gravitate towards her warm smile and genuine laugh, finding a friendly face and listening ear. Teachers deeply appreciate the meticulous care she takes in their classroom, creating spaces that are not only sparkling clean, but also conducive to learning. In the cafeteria, Sandra uses this opportunity to connect with students. She takes the time to get to know each student, fostering a sense of belonging and making them feel valued. Sandra is a proud Cougar alumni and graduated class of 1988. Sandra is married and devoted mother of four grown children, as well as a loving, as well as loving grandmother to two. Sandra currently resides in Pulaski County. Congratulations.[1070.83][1070.83](applause) Do you have family members here? Oh, okay.[1077.66][1077.66](applause) For Snowbell Elementary School, Kim Johnston is our school nurse who goes above and beyond to ensure the health and well-being of all students. Whether it's providing a simple Band-Aid, managing illnesses, or giving routine medicines to students, Nurse Johnston is always displaying a genuine concern for everyone and goes the extra mile to ensure that their needs are being met. Her dedication and compassion to our students, faculty, and staff is so appreciated, and we are grateful for the time and positive energy that she invests into the health of our school community. Congratulations.[1122.41][1122.41](applause) Pulaski County Middle School, Tina Blevins is such hardworking, kind individual. She doesn't hesitate for a second to help with anything you need, and she and her team ensure that Pulaski County Middle School is always so neat and clean. Every time I see her, she is busy, but not just, but not so busy that she cannot help you no matter what you need. She always wears a smile on her face and speaks to you while passing. She is constantly in motion and works extremely hard to make sure our school looks great. Her team is well-trained and does a fantastic job, and most, and most is due to her leadership. As busy as she is, she still has time to help her daughter and grandchild when she can, and she is always doing for others. She has such pride in her job, and it shows in the cleanliness of our building, but also in the work ethic of her staff. Is she here? She's not here.[1189.83][1189.83](laughing) I'm not gonna lie to you, but, so I asked her how many steps she gets, 'cause she gets to work at 4:30 every morning. She gets almost 17,000 steps a day working that, working that building, so, just amazing. Pulaski County High School, Lynn McVeigh serves as custodian at Pulaski County High School. Ms. McVeigh is dedicated to keeping our school building spotless and welcoming. She approaches every task with a smile, handling her responsibilities quickly and efficiently. Beyond her official duties, Ms. McVeigh takes it upon herself to ensure everyone feels special by giving out birthday cards. That is very, very impressive. She also gives a thoughtful gesture that highlights her kindness and care. She is truly a treasure, an irreplaceable member of the Pulaski High School family. Congratulations.[1241.33][1241.33](applause) Pulaski County High School CTE, Andrea Gerrels is our dedicated rotating substitute, stepping in wherever there is a need for coverage. From our early childhood education class with three and four-year-olds to school security, and from par educator roles to front office support, Andrea fits in wherever necessary with incredible attitude. She is always ready to help and embodying the true spirit of team play. Rarely absent, Andrea is willing to step into any role, even if it means covering multiple classes in a single day. Her constant positivity and warm smile create infectious energy, and students absolutely adore her. While she ensures that students follow these rules, they frequently seek her out to share their accomplishments. Pulaski High School is truly fortunate to have Ms. Gerrels on their team. Is she here?[1306.33][1306.33](applause) All right. Congratulations to all those folks, and we move to our Teachers of the Month. Pulaski County Public Schools and the Pulaski County School Board would like to recognize the following teachers. Each year, the school has the opportunity to nominate and vote for their teacher deserving of this award. These teachers are exceptional educators who focus on excellence in teaching and leadership. Thank you for all you do each day to make a difference in the lives of the children in Pulaski County Public Schools. Chrysler Elementary, Ms. Dedba Kay Hedge, I know she's here, too.[1346.83][1346.83](applause) Ms. Hedge is a lifelong resident of Pulaski County and is in her 20th year of education in Pulaski County Public Schools. She served five years at double middle before transferring to Chrysler in 2003. She is currently serving as fourth grade special education teacher. Ms. Hedge resides in Pulaski with her son Cole. Kay finds the positive in everyone she encounters. She has a heart for students and finds creative ways to help students be successful. Those nominating Ms. Hedge stated, "Students love going to see her and being one of her rock stars." She is dedicated to helping every student be successful, and Kay is always willing to go the extra mile for her students. Thank you, Ms. Hedge, for your positive demeanor and heart for the children of CDES. Congratulations.[1397.33][1397.33](applause) For Dublin Elementary, Jessica Hall has been employed with Pulaski County Public Schools as a fourth grade teacher at Dublin Elementary for 21 years. She is the wife of Andy Hall and the proud mother of two children, Jacob and Sophia, who have also gone through PCPS. Jessica is well-known for her infectious laugh and positive attitude. Jessica was nominated for Teacher of the Month by one of her peers with the following said about her. "Ms. Hall works very hard in her classroom daily. She has, always has developed good rapport with students, parents, and colleagues. As a colleague, she always is good for a laugh when things get tough, and a reminder to take things with a grain of salt." She literally gave the shoes off of her feet to one of her students who was unable to participate in the morning mile because the student had on Crocs. She is an example of relationships over everything, which is the theme this year at DES. Is Ms. Hall here?
Probably a soft call.
Oh, probably so. Let's give her a round of applause.[1523.62][1523.62](applause) Pulaski Elementary School, Randy Chrisley is a Title I teacher, but she does so much more for the school and county. She was instrumental in helping the county implement the BLAs. She created a vast amount of resources that the entire county can use in grades K through three for structured literacy. She is one of the main organizers for our Learning Loss Tutoring Program. She is probably one of the most data-driven people you will ever meet. She helps our teachers gather and report data, assist in PLCs on a regular basis, and mentors many teachers in addition to her daily duties. Other teachers have stated, "Randy has exceeded her roles and responsibilities in disseminating information to teachers regarding the expectations of the Virginia Literacy Act." She has worked tirelessly to collect and organize data, to identify targeted literacy needs, and to create groups and resources to remediate our students in a specific reading skills. The reading plans she has helped develop for dozens of kids have undoubtedly made things so much easier for the general education colleagues. Randy is an invaluable resource to both her students and her coworkers. Her fun, positive, "Let's do this" attitude inspires everybody. Ms. Chrisley grew up in Pulaski County and is a PCHS and Radford University graduate. She has been teaching for 18 years for the county. She has two wonderful daughters, Leila and Adeline, and grandson, Aubrey. She assists with sporting events and in her spare, do you actually have spare time?
(laughing)
Okay. And in her spare time, she loves knitting next to a warm fire with a warm glass of apple cider.[1626.73][1626.73](laughing) Riverlawn Elementary School, Crystal Connor is a fifth grade teacher at Riverlawn and a model of collaboration and leadership. She works closely with her colleagues to create a supportive learning environment where all students can succeed. Her willingness to help her teammates and her leadership role in the academic team demonstrates her commitment to success of all students. Crystal is an exceptional teacher whose hard work and dedication ensure students receive what they need. Crystal lives in Pulaski County with her husband, Chris, and daughter, Evelyn. Crystal is a PCH graduate, as well as a Radford University alumni. She is in her 16th year of teaching for the county and is loving every minute of it. If Crystal is not teaching, then she is spending time with her family. Her family loves to spend time outside, usually camping on the weekends away. She loves, also loves to read in her spare time. Congratulations, Crystal.[1705.00][1705.00](applause) Snowbell Elementary, Ms. Jamison is a speech-language pathologist who is being recognized for her dedication to the students that she serves. She works intensely with her students, collects the necessary data to drive her instruction, is mindful of making sure service times are met, and works diligently to ensure that IEP goals are also met. She is always willing to help her colleagues and does an excellent job of keeping parents informed of their child's progress. Her hard work is noticed and is very much appreciated by our faculty, Pulaski County Middle School, Haley Smith leads by example each day. She also displays a positive attitude and approach in every regard and is willing to assist and support her colleagues in every way possible. Ms. Smith is an excellent teacher. She makes math fun and really engages with her students. She is here before school, after school, does tutoring, creates... She is here before school, after school, does tutoring, creates things for math when needed, and is our Mastery Connect master. She has surprised her math team with small pick-me-ups all year long, and she deserves a little pick-me-up, when she deserves a little pick-me-up as well. Haley does more than she is willing to be recognized for, but she does it all knowing that she may or may not be thanked or recognized. Overall, she is a great colleague to have. I'm amazed at her tireless energy and managerial powers with the tutoring program. Congratulations to Haley. Pulaski County High School. Tekeisha McCroskey teaches English at Pulaski County High School. Ms. McCroskey puts forth tireless effort to create thoughtful lesson plans and ensure the well-being of everyone around her, including her students and coworkers. As sponsor of the National Honor Society, she dedicates herself to organizing their events with great care. Furthermore, she is nearly always available to tutor and readily takes on four blocks when needed. Ms. McCroskey is the first person to volunteer when anything is needed, and her enthusiasm is contagious. Her contributions make her an invaluable member of the Pulaski High School community. Congratulations. Pulaski County High School CTE. Becky Roseberry is our exceptional early childhood education teacher, and her presence is a calming influence on everyone she encounters. With a natural ability to connect with her students, Ms. Roseberry fosters an environment where learning is not only fun, but also deeply meaningful. Her unwavering dedication to the children in her program is unparalleled. She is committed to their growth, development, and success, both academically and personally. Beyond teaching the foundational skills that we serve, that serve her students throughout their lives, Ms. Roseberry is also inspiring the next generation of educators for Pulaski County Public Schools. She instills a passion for learning and teaching, and many of her students look up to her as a role model. Through her guidance, Ms. Roseberry is shaping the future of education, creating a lasting impact on her students and the entire community. Congratulations. So now, we get to select our Employee of the Year. So we need a little, small drum roll. All right. Our Employee of the Year, which gets two certificates and this wonderful, wonderful award here, is Sandra Cagle. Congratulations. Certainly well-deserved. So if y'all haven't ever been through River Lawn, there's like this thing that goes across the classrooms, and it says, "Cleanest Classroom." That's what happens at River Lawn, right?
They achieve a clean table every week, a clean classroom, and then we do a draw and buy ice cream.
As you can see, certainly well-deserved. Congratulations. All right, and our Teacher of the Year for Pulaski County Public Schools for... I need to let us thank you. And the Teacher of the Year will also go on to apply for the Region Seven Teacher of the Year, and hopefully the State Teacher of the Year, too. And that teacher is Randy Chrisley. We're checking one thing. Okay, all right, great. Thank you, Gina. All right, and our Bus Driver of the Year. And before you give a drum roll, I just have to say that we have tons of tough jobs in Pulaski County, but driving a bus, and driving a bus around the roads in Pulaski County when the weather is bad with, I don't know how many children, 40 or 50, on it, riding 45 minutes to school and back from school. We're so lucky that we have, first of all, we're lucky we have Troy, who really does a great job with that. And we're so grateful for every, every single bus driver that we have, and they do an outstanding job. But our Bus Driver of the Year is Rodney Farmer. And as you're getting your awards, Mr. Farmer there, before we take a picture, Pulaski County Public Schools and the Pulaski County School Board would like to recognize Mr. Rodney Farmer as Bus Driver of the Year. Mr. Farmer Rodney has been driving a school bus for Pulaski County Schools for 42 years. Rodney serves the Shiloh and Dublin area of the county, as well as helps with athletics when needed. Rodney is exactly what you would want and expect out of a bus driver. Safety-oriented, consistency, dependability, and being a member of the community he serves are just a few of the attributes and qualities that Rodney possesses that make him an exceptional bus driver. An example of this would be earlier this year when a new pre-K student decided not to get off of his bus at Dublin Elementary. That never happens, right? One day, and hid behind the seat till Rodney got all the way home. When Rodney checked his bus and found the student, he called in and returned the student back to Dublin Elementary per safety protocols. When the parents were notified about the incident, they had understandable concerns about the student continuing to ride the bus due to her maturity level and age. But after viewing the video and seeing how Rodney handled the situation, the mother's worries were put to rest, and the student got to continue to ride the bus, which she so enjoyed. I am sure the entire Shiloh community is comforted knowing Rodney is their bus driver and their students are always safe. So if you see Rodney out, thank him for exceptional service to the community and school system, and know that there is no one more deserving of this award. His students are always in good hands, and he's truly an asset to our division. Congratulations. And Jeremiah, I'm sorry that you have to follow all that, but you do. So you're good, yeah. And Jeremiah, while everybody is heading out, are you gonna be here June 10th for the meeting, June 10th? Okay. Make sure you bring your entire family. We just need to make sure you bring everybody to the June 10th meeting, that you, your family and everyone, okay?
Mr. Graham, the board. So I'd like to bring, that prom went well, I think. I think a lot of people had concerns with how small it was, but how everything was decorated, I think it looked really well. And I think our staff put a lot of effort into it, and I'm just proud of everyone and all the work they did for us, and it was amazing. And I also had the honor to go to the eighth-grade dance for volunteer hours, and that was great as well.
Did your sister like that?
She wasn't there.
Oh.
She wasn't there. Well, don't tell anybody, but they played better music at the eighth-grade dance than they did at our prom, so.
But, um...
And DJ Scotty Scott's gonna be upset now.
Don't tell him. But then, another thing I'm gonna hark on is SOL testing, obviously this week is our SOL testing. And next year, I won't be here, but I want us to really prioritize our SOL testing, because a lot of kids don't know how important they are to our community and to our schools. But from third to fifth grade, last week, actually, I got to give a motivational speech for Dublin Elementary School for their SOL testing. And I just wanna like spread awareness that kids should really take that seriously, because they really do need it to pass, not just high school, but to pass their grades and their, all the way to 12th grade. I would like to take, prioritize SOL testing a lot. And then, that's all, but I just wanna thank you all for believing in me to be a student representative for our school, especially you, Mr. Graham, for taking me under your wing and having me here to be the first student representative for, in their junior year, all the way to their senior year. And I'd also like to thank you all for all the opportunities you've given me to go to Williamsburg and the workshop, and just to speak to y'all every second Tuesday of every month. I've really, I've really enjoyed it, and I've taken my task seriously, so thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremiah, I know that we thank you, and we recognize, yes, your tenure in this position is drawing to a close, but that, those are happy thoughts. I do hope we can let our next representative be able to reach out to you for some mentoring, because we'll be cultivating, crafting another individual to step into very big shoes.
Big shoes.
Big shoes, and thank you.
Thank you.
This is our first public comment portion of the meeting tonight. It's for persons who wish to address the board regarding items that are on our agenda. Items presented by citizens may be referred to the superintendent for research, who may report back to the school board at a subsequent meeting or through other communication. If you wish to comment about an individual employee or their performance, please present your comments first to the superintendent. Such matters will not be discussed during the open board meeting. Do limit comments to three minutes, please. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board tonight?
I think everyone right now's been paid to be here. No.
My favorite crowd. All right, moving on, we've had a chance to look over the meeting minutes from the April 8th school board meeting. May I get a motion to approve those minutes if there are no requested changes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
At the same time you were looking over those minutes, you had an opportunity to review tonight's agenda. May I get a motion to approve the agenda as written for us?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Now, while we were going over all that, we got to look over the bills that have been paid, the personnel report, and other matters on our consent agenda. If I may get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We are going to now hear from Dr. Grant for our strategic plan that's in the works.
In the works, we hope it's mostly finished. All right, so Members of the Board and Superintendent Graham, I am here to present the strategic plan for the district. The strategic plan is a, has been a year-long endeavor. It started with our MTSS team, which comprises principals, counselors, teachers, specialists, superintendents from the district. The curriculum team also worked on it at length with Dr. Polcha as well. So it is a very inclusive document. Strategic Plan is a roadmap that outlines our school goals, objectives, and actions for the future. It really guides our decision-making and resource allocation for the mission and vision. Our vision for Pulaski County is Pulaski County Proud, Making a Difference One Child at a Time. Could I say mission? Our vision, sorry. Mission, we really took a long time in writing this. I don't know if you guys can enlarge that at all for them to see. Oh, okay. Our mission is PCPS will partner with the school community to enhance positive relationships while promoting a sense of belonging, increased engagement, and academic achievement. And a lot of that also came from our surveys we did earlier in the year. We surveyed students, staff, community. We, I mentioned everybody, students, staff, yes. And really, it came down to kids feeling like they belong and that they have a connection at school. We saw that some of that was missing. And then, what we found out through lots of discussion and data analysis is that it comes down, do you have to be at school? So our focus for our MTSS team moving forward is chronic absenteeism. Is Mary Shefferton here? No, Sheila? She'd be happy about that. I just wanna go through our core values, and then I'm just gonna kinda highlight the big stuff here. So our core values at Pulaski County Public Schools. We believe positive relationships are the foundation for a successful school experience. Students thrive in supportive and safe environment. Schools are places for belonging, kindness, and respect. Students have potential to be learners, leaders, communicators, collaborators, critical thinkers, creative thinkers, and good citizens. Students need opportunities to improve, succeed, and reach their full potential. Schools are a place for high-quality instruction, student engagement, innovative exploration, and curiosity. Students are most successful when families and schools partner by establishing and maintaining open lines of communication, parents attending meetings, and sending students to school every day and on time. Professional staff will communicate with families in a timely manner on all aspects of their child's public school experience, positives and negatives. High expectations are the standard we set for ourselves and others. And we really think that the core values really, really say a lot. And I hope what you've heard through that is relationships, high expectations, and communication with the community and families, which we've heard we need to work on, and we are doing that. So in looking through this, when you look at this plan, we have five major parts. We have safety. We wanna provide students, faculty, and staff with a safe, welcoming, and healthy school environment, including physical, mental, emotional, and social safety, and continuously evaluating practices to strengthen school security. So we have action statements on what we're gonna do, and then how we're gonna do that. And then we look at teaching, we look at learning, and we look at accountability. So if you kinda wanna just flip through it, so under each section, teaching, we really hone in on professional staff, what we wanna do and how we're gonna get there. Teaching, lesson structure and planning, same thing. Teaching, lesson structure and planning, same thing. Professional development is very important. We have our PLX coming up, July 23rd, and it's, uh, professional development that we're putting on for free for our teachers and anyone that wants to come. We've got eight representatives from the VDOE coming to help us, and they're doing sessions. We've got a bunch of AI sessions, we've got hand-to-mind manipatives, we've got our own teachers and administrators putting on professional development. We wanna grow as a, um, we're continuous learn, continuous learners, and we want to be able to provide that for our staff and the needs of our staff, so that's part of our plan. Learning. You can go ahead, I won't read all that.
Okay.
Yeah, curiosity and innovation. I hope you're hearing a lot about curiosity and innovation. Student-centered learning, 21st centered learning and innovation. High expectations, you're hearing that a lot. Community well-being, I left that out at first, I'm sorry. Our broader community, our Virginia preschool initiative, you can change it. And community engagement. We are having a huge, 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 huge kickoff to the school year in August 15th, I think. It's gonna be at the high school, we're gonna have a guest speaker, we're gonna have dinner, we're gonna have a petting zoo, we're gonna have blowups, we're gonna have a lot of things for the community to come out, and let's kick off a great year. So, that's part of what we're doing there. Chronic absenteeism, I told you, we're really working on that. School counseling program. Accountability, there's three ways we are accountable. We're accountable to the federal government, I guess, it sounds like we are still. The state with the Virginia Department of Education, and like Jeremiah said, we are, we really had a big day of reading SOLs across the county today. So, keep your, your thoughts and your good vibes and your prayers for students and teachers and principals, because they're going through that right now. They've worked hard, and I know they'll do great. So, federal accountability, it kinda tells what we're gonna do with that. State accountability, and then local. There you go. So, I'm hoping that you guys will get a chance to look at that. I know Gina and Sabrina have looked at that. We could work on it every day and add to it. We're doing so many awesome things here. It really gives me cold chills, because we're working hard, and these people that are sitting in the back, because they're so tired, principals, directors, they, they really, really, really need continual encouragement. You know, they're the encouragers, right? So, encouragers need encouragement, so you can encourage your superintendent right there. But I just want you to know that this strategic plan is awesome. Please ask me if you have any questions. I would love to, you know, share it with the community if you feel like it's ready to go, and we will continue to revise as needed. Anybody have any questions?
No questions, just wanna say this looks great, and I'm actually excited, because I will be at your PLX event.
Yes, thank you.
Can't wait.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, too, Josh.
Thank you, Dr. Grant. All right, moving on to something a little fun here, lighthearted. We've been participating, the school system has been participating in the one-bag challenge that was issued by the Puyallaski County Board of Supervisors. We have had several students and school-age individuals out picking up bags of trash, and several groups at the, um, at our schools have taken up the challenge. I was really happy to see a lot of those pictures. National Honor Society had a group of students out. I know CTE Ag and Horticulture Program, they were at some fishing stream somewhere, and they were caught picking up trash, and so, I really love seeing that. But it also comes with the perk, you might win $100. We are gonna do a drawing for three $100 gift cards, which can be picked up here at the school board office. Ms. Crawford will be, be the one holding on to those, and we'll get information to our winner, so. You gonna draw? Draw? You're going to, you can't win twice, though. If it's a name from last month, I get, I can't.
Did anyone write those down?
I did.
Yep, one last month. All right, we have, one of our winners of the $100 gift card is Ava Jackson. William Duncan. And Aiden Hilton. Also, too, we have made a decision on the winner of the jointly-funded $1,000 One Bag Challenge scholarship. That individual will be formally recognized at the May 19th Board of Supervisors meeting, should anybody want to attend that. But the recipient of that is Mr. Carter Smith.
Well deserved.
Ooh, okay, now really getting into the fun stuff here. We have some budget analysis.
Jessica has started doing that now. She'll come up into my office and go, "Budget, budget." It really gets me, really gets me excited for this. An analysis of the current budget through April is attached for your review. As of the end of April, 16.67% of the budget year is remaining. On the revenue side, basic aid funding formula requires basic aid payments to be adjusted to reflect the increased state share of costs resulting from the projected increase in sales tax revenues. Therefore, our basic aid payments are slightly over budget. Our state sales tax payments are now under budget at this point in the year, and many of the other state revenues are from lottery-funded accounts that we began receiving in January. They are projecting slightly under budget at this point in the year. All major expenditure areas are under budget. And then, I would like to add that our preliminary invoice for stride came in at just over $4.2 million, and that final invoice will come in at the end of May. I've included that amount in our expenditure and the county transfer to give an accurate forecast of the school board's financial status. The projected county general fund transfer through March is $12.5 million, leaving approximately $5.8 available for the remainder of the year. By comparison, at the same time last year, we had 3.2 or 19.62%. This figure is a projection due to the Treasury's Office getting caught up on posting and reconciling revenues. Once we receive up-to-date reconciliations, we'll have a better idea of what our actual.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Sklar?
Can you give just a brief update on the required local match that we had today? Put you on the spot.
Dang, Rob, those eyes.
I think they need to know.
Yeah, after, after speaking with, I think Rob spoke with Mr. Sweet today, and, um, according to Mr. Sweet, we will be fully funded for the match next year. Yay.
Fantastic, that sounds like good news.
It is good news.
Why, why did you act like you were giving us bad news?
She was trying to be very politically correct with that, too, and you did.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's it, I don't, I don't know what that looks like yet, um, I haven't received anything from Trish, but, um.
The $200,000 that we were waiting on is apparently being taken out of the reserves.
Okay.
Okay.
Cool.
Yes.
Great work, guys. Great work. I got worried when I saw this on the agenda, I was like, oh, Lord, after 20 years, the PCHS chiller finally blew. Oh, no.
He's been scaring us with this chiller, and here he is.
It did.
Old Betsy.
Yeah, after all the positivity, a little bit of negativity. Long story short, uh, all spring, to get the chiller fired up this year, we've, we've had issues, and, um, we've been going through a lot of things. Thursday afternoon, about 4:45, we determined it's, it's not salvageable. So, unfortunately, we're gonna have to move forward with the replacement of the chiller at PCHS. Fortunately, uh, we've been working pretty much around the clock since Thursday with the manufacturer under a state contract. And if we cut the PO for just the chiller, not the installation, because we don't know what those numbers are yet, and there's a lot of moving parts that are happening since Thursday afternoon, but we do have a 500-ton chiller quote that I got today for approximately $400,000. Now, that's just to buy the chiller. There is a fairly substantial amount of electrical, pump work, piping work, and site work that has to accompany a new chiller. A 500-ton air-cooled chiller is approximately the size of a school bus, so we're not talking about, you know, something very small here. So, we're trying to coordinate a lot of things right now, and it's just in its infancy. So, if we cut the PO to the manufacturer tomorrow, um, they are giving me a ship date of July 18, and I, uh, we will begin the installation July 25th. Hopefully, if we can do a lot of the preliminary work, which we're already lining up, we can start the install promptly after we receive the chiller, and I'm hoping five days. There is gonna be some disruption to the school schedule at the beginning of school. I've been working with Ms. Bowling throughout the entire process, keeping her in the loop with what we've gotta do. There's a lot of other things that are going on with that since this just happened Thursday, so I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you have.
Currently, currently what services are impacted with the chiller being done right now?
Well, what we got right now is, uh, our chiller is, is two circuits, okay? We have one circuit that is fully functional currently, the second circuit is not. Uh, it is not functioning at all right now. With one circuit, we can hold the high school in a springtime year and be okay. We can, you know, obviously, you know, in your house, you don't, right now, this time of year, you're not running it as much, but come August, you get a full building load.
So, we'll be good for two weeks.
Yeah, well.
Hey, good-ish, good-ish, Jennifer, don't give me those eyes, good-ish, good-ish.
Yeah, and we should, we should be, you know, we're hoping. The other thing with that was, at one point this week, we were looking at having to put money in the old chiller.
Ah, don't do that.
Just to sustain it until we can get the new chiller, so we're.
Just open the windows, Jess.
We don't have any of those. We're efforting not to do that. We're, I think we're gonna be okay. I mean, but if, pretty much operating on one circuit, the idea with that is you have redundancy with, with dual circuits. If we lose anything on circuit one, there's nothing.
Yeah.
We have nothing. So, um, long story short, we just don't have any other options, so.
Well, we've already been budgeting and planning for this for a long, long time, since we're on a cap.
We always save, we save, I've been, uh, working with Morgan this week. We've always, I think I've said it in every meeting I present at, we try to save that much money for that particular piece of equipment. So, um, right now, I don't wanna say there's, there's some, um, there's some switchgear things that have to happen, electrical upgrades that have to happen that can be pricey as well.
Yeah.
So, right now, I'm gonna say $800,000, but I'm hoping it's a lot less than that, but.
What, what I'm hearing, Jess, is, uh, the, the, everyone in this room is gonna retire next time someone talks about the PCHS chiller.
Yeah, I hope.
Good.
I hope so.
Need to replace it.
I hope so, it's 25 years old.
Yeah.
Uh, the oldest chiller I've ever seen taken out of service that was operational, that was operational before it died, was 30 years. So, I mean, we've got a.
It's time.
Yeah, expected lifespan's 20, so it's five years past its expected lifespan.
Yeah, like you said, you've talked about it, you've warned us, you've, you know, and so, we're not surprised by this.
So, it, it's happening, and we're gonna move forward with it first thing tomorrow morning. Can you give, can you give a, just a quick update on the, on Northwood? Because we got some good news today with that, too.
And Mr. Williams has a question about the.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, um, with the, we've been budgeting for this all along, does this affect adjustments or anything to our capital plan?
It does. It will, it will change our planning for the next three years.
Okay.
I mean, it's, right now, we have a cash balance, we have a cash balance. I worked with Morgan this morning, we, we, we have, I gave you guys a full counting. After the projects that we have committed to at this point, which is the stadium lighting project, the security wall project in Northwood, if we, um, well, when we go through with the chiller, our capital fund balance is, is gonna be slim. $980,000 is the cash available right now, somewhere in that neighborhood, not an exact number, it's something and change. So, depending on what we end up having to spend for the chiller, I mean, we're gonna be down, you know, $200,000, $300,000 in that capital fund, so that will, we will have to make, things will have to be delayed. And if, as long as the revenue stream to that capital fund stays intact, which is the debt service payments, uh, and we can continue to put our carryforward money into it, um, we should rebound a couple of years, but it's definitely, it's definitely changed our three-to-four-year outlook as far as what we can accomplish because of, you know, it just, it's a large unplanned, uh, not unexpected, but unplanned expense to that. The idea on our sheet was that thing was gonna make it four more years, and it just didn't.
Are there any other chillers out there just like that, at that age on them?
We have one other chiller that's old in the school system, it's Snowville Elementary School. It's on a much smaller scale. I mean, it is, it's, um, you know, when I, the one at the high school is, like I said, it's a 500-ton unit, and it's the size of a school bus. I mean, the one at Snowville Elementary School's the, the size of a dumpster in reference. So, I mean, it, it's 20, 18, somewhere around 18 or 20 years old, uh, but it's, it's a much smaller, it comes with a much smaller price tag and a much smaller install, if you know what I mean. It's a whole lot easier. We just basically pick that one up, put another one in there, plug it up. Whereas the high school's gonna take a significant amount. We're going from a liquid-cooled chiller to an air-cooled chiller, which has been the plan all along. It gives us the flexibility where the chiller will operate year-round if necessary.
Ms. Bowles will be driving a Cadillac, that's what that means.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions about the chiller specifically? I'd be glad to get into the mechanics, but.
No, sir. It's already late enough, Jess, we don't need to hear that.
All right, uh, Northwood, real quick, uh, the fiber, I think the construction starts on the fiber next week. They've reached out to Lincoln to get my contact info, so I can meet with them to, uh, work out the routing into the building. I'm not sure exactly how they're gonna get into the building where they need to be, but we'll work that out with them. Otherwise, uh, we should be moving to, um, we should be moving to paint by the end of next week. If we move to paint by the end of next, the next two weeks will tell the tale. If, if everything hits their marks in the next two weeks at Northwood, I don't see why the anticipated week, boy, July's gotten bad all of a sudden, uh, July 14th.
Man, I thought you cup half-full, baby.
I just realized.
I hear a lot of half empty stuff. I'm hearing, I'm hearing good things.
We should still hopefully be on, uh, schedule for the July 14th move, if everything continues to fall into place at Northwood. Other than that, I mean, I'd be glad to show anybody Northwood if they wanna see it.
Yeah, I might take a tour, uh, next week or two, if you don't mind.
Yeah, just give me, you know, just reach out.
Yeah, cool.
And the other two projects are underway. I've gotta take Ms. Bowling to Chandler Concrete, uh, this week to pick out some brick.
Cool.
Thank you, Jess.
Thanks, Jess, good job. Clap for a chiller.
We, we knew it was coming, it's just you kinda know it's gonna be a little bit, but it's not surprising. Mr. Graham, our disfun in attendance data.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I pull this up, I also wanna thank Theresa and Morgan, they, they really helped us with the required local match, and also the Board of Supervisors and Jonathan, too, for really taking care of that for us. That was a surprise to all of us, and luckily, we, we handled it, so.
It's a good partnership.
This is great, uh, it's the best we've had all year. I don't know if you've all had a chance to look at it, but we are meeting the accountability measures as a division at all of our schools. If you look down at the bottom where it's chronically absent, there's only one area, I think it's third grade, that is a plus instead of a minus of, of the improvement that we have. That's just fantastic, that's, again, a testament to our, to our wonderful staff, to our administrators as well. And then the student behavior is, is just as good. You know, you think, as you get towards the end of the year, you have some difficult times, but we reduced our incidents from March to April, and that's important, because it's a very, very intense time with testing and getting ready for testing and things of that nature. And if you can look to the year-to-date, that we are certainly moving in the right direction. So, those are, those are good, uh, good data that Debbie is, is sharing with us, and that our, our students and staff are really working hard.
our students and staff are really working hard on. So glad to share that with you all.
That's great information. I know you've also shared some with us, too. We've had some record-setting months on attendance, really, which is good to see.
Yes, ma'am.
They want to be back into school.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Arnold, do you have a new CTE course application for us?
Oh, sir.
Want to fill us in?
Well, thank you for the time. The high school, more specifically, the CTE department would like to add Emergency Medical Responder. This course sort of varies our Health and Medical Science offerings a great deal. We can partner this with Introduction to Health and Medical Science initially, and then hopefully as our EMT program, which is coming back, you all know that's coming back, with Mr. Sisiano, who, if you haven't met him yet, you're ready. He's one of those people, you don't have to give a kick to get going, you've got to put a governor on him. What we anticipate is this course would offer kids to take Intro to Health and Medical, take this Emergency Medical Responder, and then they could take a certification and be a completer. Or they could take EMT I, EMT II, and then this, and then that is, credential profile is very attractive to people like law enforcement, fire safety. So this, this course would allow kids to provide life-saving care until the EMTs get there. And if they want to stop there, they can stop with this, or they can continue on in the EMT program.
Wonderful, isn't it? Do you have any questions for Mr. Arnold?
No, sounds, sounds great.
I know we're running late and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you all publicly for your confidence in me. It's a learning curve, but I'm learning every day and it is a fascinating position and I really appreciate it.
We, we don't know anything about a learning curve.
You're doing a great job, Kim.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, we have some calendar items here, Mr. Graham.
Yes, ma'am. The, really, the big one that we want to, and we've sent this out and probably Brendan and I'll send it out again, well, it's tomorrow, so I guess we won't send it out. It is a regular school day tomorrow because of testing. So we have not had any, any issues with that. Big day, Friday, May 23rd, is our graduation. I know the high school staff's working very, very hard on that and we're hoping for good weather. Memorial Day is the 26th. Last day of school is the 30th with a two-hour early release. The second and third are teacher workdays. Friday, June 20th is our celebration of Juneteenth. That's right in the middle of summer school. We are doing a really good job getting ready for summer school. And then Tuesday, June 10th, is our regular school board meeting.
We're getting near the end.
Yes, we are. Yes, ma'am. Oh, yes, forgot one. Thank you, Tara. We do have the retirement luncheon on Friday. Hope you all are able to be there. It's at Draper Mercantile. I think it'll be really, really special, 11...
12:30.
12:30. So hope you're able to make that. Certainly understand if you can't.
I'll see Richie there.
And we have, we have nine we're honoring, correct? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Three were from last year to retire late and we already had the luncheon, so we're bringing in, I know two of those folks have come.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think we looked at, it's combined 212 years of educational service. Okay, moving on to our action items for tonight. Last month, we all read over and looked at the VSB policy updates.
And I just got May, so get ready for another one.
Right. More? Can I get a motion that we pass VSB policy updates?
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Porter.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
All right. And we also heard from Dr. Roxanne Suma last month, who brought to us a presentation on the plan to re-implement valedictorian and salutatorian. There was opportunities for questions then. I will state personally, having sat on that committee to bring this back, there was a lot of thoughtful deliberation that went into this and many things considered. And I do believe the implementation plan, beginning with the class of 2029, is the most fair way to proceed. It gives everybody a heads-up, levels the playing field for anybody who wants to compete with this. Personally, I said, let's just do it and let's do it next year, but, you know, let's be fair here. So if there are no further questions for Dr. Suma, can I have a motion that we re-implement valedictorian and salutatorian in 2029?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Porter.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Thank you. VSB Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award. Will you explain this one for us?
So this is something that we would like to apply for every year and Mr. Arnold's kind of heading this up, too. And we would, we need your permission in order to send in an application for that to be competitive with all the other divisions that are going to send one in, too. So we would appreciate it if you all would allow us to do that. And we feel like we have a really good offering for them and hopefully be very successful.
Sounds great to me. This, this program description and the application process, somebody's going to be very busy all summer working on this. Can I get a motion that we move forward with applying for the VSB Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Porter.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Okay, 2025. Another one I'll let you explain to me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, this, this is new and we just, you know, we wanted to make you aware that, you all aware that we are, Teresa Morgan, Kim, Richie, all of them are working hard to get our contracts out. We would really like to get the contracts out before our teachers go home. They are electronic, hoping to be electronic this year, which will make it a little bit easier. We are putting in the 3% raise that, that you all already approved of us doing, but we just wanted to make you aware and get your approval that we can move forward with those contracts as soon as Teresa and Morgan and Richie and Kim can get them, get them, and then we'll get them out to our employees.
Well, now with the assurances that we're going to get the RLE and RLM, yes.
Well, now, in the contract, too, there is also, we were saying, contingent upon local, state, and federal funding.
Wonderful. Can I get a motion that we approve with moving forward with issuing these contracts?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Porter.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Thank you so much. So we really appreciate the work that all of you have done. We, we've been really dug deep into this agreement with the Community Health Center and all of you have put a lot of time and energy into it. And we are at the point where we can, we have vetted it with our school board attorney, we have vetted it with the Community Health Center of the, of the new rally, we have vetted it with you all. I feel like that we are at the point where we can go ahead and approve this. If, if you all feel the need to, I did talk to Ms. Braun today, too. She was very appreciative of all the collaboration that you all have, have worked with her. I can tell you, just from being there, it's a wonderful service for our families. In fact, one of the phone calls I had today, I was, set up an appointment for one of our, our students, one of our fifth and eighth-grade students to be there hopefully tomorrow, they could see for dental services. So I just think it's, it's a wonderful resource and something that is great for Pulaski County. So I would recommend that you all approve the agreement and we move forward as we've been for the last, I can't remember when the, when the health center, I wasn't here when it opened, but whenever it had opened.
Does anybody have any comments? I want to say thank you, too. I, I know it was about a year ago when we kind of brought this up and heard from the public, who was quite supportive of keeping the clinic between Josh's tenure as chair and leading this and the work we've done back and forth and the thoughtful and intentional input of the board. I feel confident that the concerns we had have been addressed by this, but still allowing for very necessary basic health care and above all, dental care to continue to be available. The more I look around and the more I see, we are quickly falling into an area that although there may be insurance available, that doesn't guarantee health care is going to be able to be provided. And this is particularly true when it comes to the dental side of care. We're becoming a pediatric dental desert and it's a necessary service. So if there are no further comments, I would entertain a motion that we pass the contract as written between Pulaski County Public Schools and the Community Health Center.
Madam Chair, I would like to make that motion.
Thank you, Jake. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Porter.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
I would like to say one thing before I vote. It's 2021, it's when it all started and it was there when, when they first introduced it and everything. The contract we have now is 10 times better than what was originally out there. There are some safeguards put in there. It's not perfect.